By the public for the public hearing and any questions received during the hearing. Board members will be polled for their comments, if any, prior to a motion. All those wishing to speak, please state your name. And all speakers, please raise your right hand and respond yes or I do. Okay, are you ready, speakers?
Yep.
Do you swear or affirm that the statements you're about to give are true to the best of your knowledge, information, or belief?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so today is, for the record, today is Tuesday, October thirteenth, and the time is now seven oh three. And, uh, we will be hearing a detailed site plan. Number D, D is in Delta, S is in SPAM, P is in Papa, zero, seven, zero, three, one, tag, zero, four. Which is docket number twenty ten oh seven. It's the Encompass Health Inpatient Physical Rehabilit- Physical Rehabilitation Facility at Melford. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, um, Frank, for your presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, Frank Stevens from the city planning staff here tonight to review with you, uh, this detailed site plan. As Mr. Rogers had indic- has indicated for the Encompass Health facility in Melford. I'm having a little trouble here getting this thing started. There we go, okay.
Click resume slideshow.
Okay, yeah, I got that, thank you. Anyway, um, these, these slides I'm referring to are also attachments in, in the staff report. Um, this is, uh, attachment, attachment one, which shows the, the Melford Development. And, um, to the south is US fifty and to the west is Route Three, Maryland Route Three. Melford Boulevard enters the site from the west and traverses to the east and the property that we're talking about tonight is kind of shaded in, in this area, Marconi Drive is over here to the west. Uh, this is an enlarged area of, uh, of the, uh, the site and the immediate neighborhood. Marconi Drive is, uh, to the north in this area here. I mean, Melford Boulevard, Marconi Drive is over here. And the site is this six point four acre property to the south of, of Melford Boulevard. Uh, in this location is the newly opened, um, Tribute Assisted Living Facility. Uh, down here is US Route fifty. There's an existing, uh, wet stormwater management pond, uh, just south of the property that will, uh, that the site will, uh, drain into. And to the east and south are existing and approved, uh, a forestation and, and woodland preservation areas. Howerton Ray Way, uh, is to the south and runs east-west out to this street o- over here. This is exhibit, uh, attachment three in the report. It's, it's the, uh, an enlargement of the property itself. Uh, Melford Boulevard is up here, Marconi Drive is over here. Uh, you can see the outline of the, the building, which is generally an L configuration. Uh, there are two site access points off of Melford Boulevard in this location and one over here into the property. There is no vehicular access into the site from either Marconi Drive or Howerton Way. Uh, there are a hundred and forty-four parking spaces proposed around the perimeter of the building. In between two wings of the building is a proposed gazebo and therapy courtyard area as well as a, uh, service area for loading, unloading, and, uh, trash pickup, um, in the southeastern corner of the building. There was a virtual stakeholders meeting held on this project on September twenty-fourth. And a summary of, of that is provided on, uh, page three of our report. An analysis of the detailed site plan begins on page four of our report. Uh, we've noted the purpose of, purposes of detailed site plans uh, as outlined in section twenty-seven, two eighty-one C one of the zoning ordinance. And we've noted the required finding that needs to be made to approve a detailed site plan pursuant to section twenty-seven, two eighty-five B. This next slide is, there we go, this next slide is, uh, is attachment five, which shows the elevations of the, uh, of the facility. Elevation A at the top here is the front elevation that faces Melford Boulevard. And in this location at the far eastern end is the ma- the main entrance to the building. Elevation B is the eastern elevation which faces Marconi Drive. And the front entrance is to the far right in this particular elevation. Elevation C is the south side or the rear of the building that would face, uh, the stormwater pond in Howerton Way. And finally, elevation D is, uh, is the western elevation and this area here, uh, face in the foreground is a patient drop-off and pickup area and then to the far left is, you can see in the background, the main, uh, entrance to the building. Attachment six is, uh, the landscape plan. Um, we begin our discussion regarding landscaping on page seven of the report. Uh, there are no invasive plant species proposed, all the trees and shrubs that are proposed within this project are native species. Attachment seven is, um, uh, re- regarding the lighting that's proposed, the parking lot lighting in the upper left of this, of this screen and a discussion regarding that begins on page eight of the report. Uh, we're recommending that the pole height be reduced from twenty-five to thirty feet in accordance with the city's development review guidelines. And we're recommending additional lighting in two areas, one at the building entrance and the other in the gazebo, uh, therapy courtyard area. This is attachment eight regarding signage and a discussion of that begins on page eight of our report. Uh, there are two types of signage that are proposed, the first is shown, um, in this slide. Uh, it's the, it's the su- the building mounted sign above the main entrance to the facility that faces, uh, Melford Boulevard. The other two, uh, signs are ground mounted signs at the, um, one at the, uh, each site access point into the property. And details of those signs will be forthcoming. The project has, uh, an approved stormwater management concept plan, which is valid into next year. And a discussion regarding stormwater management is noted on page nine of our staff report. Also on page nine, uh, is discussed woodland conservation. There's an approved type, type-two tree conservation plan for this project. And there were approximately six acres of woodland conservation or preservation in the immediate vicinity of the property. On page nine, uh, there's a discussion regarding conformance with the master plan. And based on the evaluation and the discussion in the report, it can be concluded that the Melford Development conforms to the area master plan. Uh, lastly, on page ten of the report is a staff recommendation for approval. And the reasons for that recommendation and, uh, conditions, uh, recommended for the approval are dis- are discussed on pages, uh, ten and eleven of the report. And, uh, the applicant has indicated that they agree with the conditions as stated in the staff report. That concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, head look for my mute button, thank you, um, very good report, Frank. Appreciate that, uh, do we have any, uh, questions from anyone before we go to the applicant? No questions?
Yeah.
Matt, will you be doing the, uh, presentation for the applicant?
I will.
Okay, the mic is yours.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, uh, Matthew Tedesco with the law firm in McNamee-Hosey here on behalf of the applicant, which is, uh, Encompass Health. Um, good evening, everybody and members of the, uh, advisory planning board, it's, it's my pleasure to be before you this evening. Um, with us tonight, I just want to do a real quick introduction, I know you guys see a bunch of names on your screens. Um, no need for everyone to turn on their cameras, they, no need to be shy, but, um, with us this evening, we have Mr. John Shuden from Encompass, uh, Health, he is the Director of Design and Construction. We also have David Vickle from Solzhe. Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic and Consulting. Um, I don't see our architect, Mr. Joe Ferris, but the architect is with, uh, Frederick Architects. And we also have the pleasure of joining us this evening, um, our friends from St. John's Properties who are the owners. Uh, Mr. Andrew Rowde and, uh, Mr. Ken Finley, so thank you all for joining us this evening, we have the, almost a full compilation, compilation of the team, should you all have any questions. Um, but like I said, we're very excited to be here, I want to thank Mr. Stevens for his, um, very thorough staff report uh, and his presentation this evening. To, uh, ruin any surprises, as, as Frank indicated, we do not have any objections to any of the proposed, uh, conditions by staff. We're willing and able and ready to accept them as proffered or as recommended, um, by the, um, by Mr. Stevens and, and staff. We do have a, a PowerPoint presentation that we would like to go through with you, uh, just to give you a little bit more information. Although Frank did a very good job of going through the report and the application, we do have some, um, additional material to share with you, so if you are with me, I'm just gonna try to share my screen. Can everybody see that, okay?
Yes, we can.
So, um, just to get into orientation, um, from, you know, where this property is located within the Melford community, you can see we've highlighted it uh, to the bottom right in yellow. Um, it fits in with, uh, some of the flex buildings as well as some of the recent development that Frank mentioned, um, in there, but it's, it's more or less to the southeast corner or quadrant of the Melford, uh, project. The next slide, the next few slides actually is just, you know, we wanted to provide some in- information on Encompass Health, uh, who they are and, um, so that everyone's familiar with the application, not only from what it looks like, but actually from the operation, uh, and what it is. An inpatient rehabilitation facility, uh, Encompass Health runs, and you can see from this slide, um, they are the nation's largest owner and operator of, uh, IRFs, it, which is short for inpatient rehabilitation facility. Again, then the nation's, the nation's largest owner and oper- operator, um, of IRS. Nationwide, they own and operate a hundred and thirty-three facilities in thirty-three states, including, uh, Puerto Rico. In total, approximately as of, um, two thousand and nineteen, there was, they employed over thirty-one thousand employees nationwide. Although this slide includes, just to be, just to be clear, although this slide includes some information on, uh, home health and hospice facilities, this particular facility at Melford will not be a home health or hospice facility, it will only be an inpatient rehabilitation facility. Um, this slide is really to give some more background with respect to what an inpatient facility is. In particular, an Encompass Health, uh, inpatient facility. And the high points from this, uh, slide, I'll just go through really quickly. As I indicated, they're the leading provider of, uh, post-acute medical services and is the nation's largest owner and operator of inpatient facilities. Uh, IRFs treat patients who have undergone treatment for acute medical events such as strokes, spinal cord injuries, neurological conditions, amputations, lower extremity fractures, or joint replacements. Following treatment, need short-term intensive physical rehabilitation prior to patients' return to the community. As we mentioned during the stakeholders meeting, um, it's important not only to understand what an IRF is, but it's also important to understand what it's not. Um, this facility is not and will not offer comprehensive inpatient services such as surgical or diagnostic services. Um, and do not operate emergency departments. Um, they also do not provide drug and alcohol or mental health rehabilitative services. Typically, or in all instances, patients arrive through non-emergency transport vehicles. And prior to admission, an encompassed patient undergoes evaluation to ensure that the patient is medically stable and capable of participating in intensive therapy. The average age of an encompassed patient is seventy-one years old, um, the average stay is thirteen days. They do not accept walk-ins. This slide is intended to provide just a patient profile, um, percentage-wise, as far as the common, common diagnoses uh, of the patients that come into the facility. As you can see on the right-hand column, neurological rehabilitation at twenty-one point five percent is the largest, uh, type of patient, followed by stroke, uh, disability, which is impairments, brain, orthopedic, and fractures, and then the list continues. With trauma cardiac, spinal cord replacement, that's lower extremity replacement, joint, hip, knee, things like that. And then amputation and other make up the, the rest of the percentages. Um, admission criteria is on the left-hand column, three, yeah, e- each patient has to be able to undergo three hours of therapy per day uh, or fifteen hours per week. Uh, physician care is three times a week and nursing care is twenty-four seven. This slide provides a breakdown of the care providers and services with, that will be provided in the facility. Uh, for rehabilitation physicians, nurses, physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech-language therapists, respiratory therapists, case managers, and discharge services. Uh, the facility characteristics as mentioned in, um, Frank's staff report and, and our justification statement. Uh, the first phase, we're proposing sixty beds or sixty-two thousand square feet of all private rooms. Um, we hope that groundbreaking will be next, uh, March twenty-twenty-one and the, with a grand opening in May of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, initial development cost is approximately forty-seven million dollars for the facility. So it's quite an extensive, um, financial, uh, development with respect to, uh, investment into the Bowie community. This slide is, um, just, uh, representations of recently constructed facilities throughout the country, uh, two in Texas, uh, one in South Carolina and one in Boise, uh, make up this slide. You can see some common themes and characteristics with the architecture, um, which will be represented in, um, the one proposed at Melford. Uh, now taking you inside the facility, these are, um, representations of what to, what can be expected inside. Now, although a detailed site plan doesn't approve, you know, internal, uh, finishes or floor plans per se, uh, given the uniqueness of this, uh, particular project, we thought it was necessary and appropriate to share with, uh, the board, uh, the facility and its i- interior, um, accommodations. And so what you see in this slide in the top-left corner is the, is the therapy gym or room. And these, and again, I think I mentioned, but these will be representative of what will be in this facility. Uh, the top-right corner is the ADL or, uh, daily living suite. The bottom-left is the reception lobby, which you can see is, um, accentuated with nice, uh, finishes. And then we have the, the nurses stationed to the bottom right. This is a, um, representation of a patient room, again, all rooms are private. Um, they obviously have, uh, accessible features for, uh, the patients, both in shower and other amenities, uh, for, for daily care. This is, um, slides of the dining room and outside grounds, as Frank mentioned, we do have an outdoor courtyard area with a gazebo. Um, we also will, there'll be a, a dining room and cafeteria. This is the rendered site plan, just to add a little color and flavor to the, uh, black and white line plan that you saw earlier with respect to the landscaping and parking. As, uh, Mr. Stevens indicated, we have two points of access off of Melford Boulevard. Um, the main entrance to the building is in this location here, uh, the longer L-shaped facade fronts on Melford. And this is the internal courtyard that I referenced earlier. Uh, these are the elevations that, uh, Mr. Stevens shared with you, these, these just are, uh, color representations. So I think we've, we went through those pretty well. And then this is a three-dimensional, uh, plan showing the building and its features. The only other thing that I would like to highlight, um, before turning it over to see if anybody else on the team has any further comments or que- uh, statements they wanted to make, is this facility, the state of Maryland, does require what's called a certificate of need for this particular, uh, use in the state. Um, I'm happy to report that the state, um, did issue this facility, its certificate of need, I believe in June. John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was in May or June of this year, the certificate of need was issued by the state. So with the approval of this detailed site plan, um, and then obviously county and, and any city permits, uh, the facility will be permitted for construction. That is all that I had for our presentation. Just one other thing that, to highlight again, just to drive home the point as far as the purposes of an, of, uh, of this facility is, it's a, it's a specialized inpatient healthcare dedicated to improving, maintaining, or restoring physical strength, co- cognition, and mobility to patients after illness, injury, or surgery. So I know originally there was a lot of questions on what kind of rehabilitation facility this would be. Um, I want to highlight again, it's, it's not, um, a substance abuse-type facility, it's, it's primarily, uh, restoring, maintaining, and improving, uh, physical strength, cognition, and mobility to patients who have undergone an acute event. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have as far as our presentation, I will turn it over to Mr. John Shuden, just to see if he has any other additional thoughts or comments before seeing if there's any questions of the board.
Hey, thanks, excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Matt, you've got a great job of mine as well.
Thank you, John, so, so with that, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, we have the team here, we have, um, any questions that, that you may have, we're happy to answer. Uh, I want to thank staff again, uh, for its presentation, its review of this case. Again, I'm very pleased, I think it's the first time I've ever been before you that we have, um, a full agreement on conditions and we're not asking for any type of revisions or modifications, so that's a compliment to this applicant as well as to your staff and we appreciate it and we thank you.
Alright, thanks, Matt, and, um, thank you guys for, you know, the time and effort that you put into this, uh, the two public hearings and then meeting with us this evening. Bringing us, uh, the information that you're bringing to us. Um, so I'm gonna go around the horn here and see if any of the board members have any questions, comments, or other. So I'll start with, uh, to my top left here, Detra, Ms. Trash.
Good evening, everyone, I, uh, have to apologize for the background noise, my husband has a Zoom call at the same time I'm having a Zoom call. Um, but, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Tedesco for the presentation and, um, thank you, Mr. Stevens. I, so my concerns are, um, uh, just threefold, um, around traffic, around the lighting, and around security. Um, just security naturally, when you, um, have a hospital facility, you've got people coming and going. Um, so I heard you say that your visiting hours were over at eight o'clock and you all did not have any evening or nighttime activities for your residents, but, um, if you could talk about how you're addressing, um, traffic, the lighting, and security?
Sure, thank, and thank you for that question. Um, with respect to the lighting, as Mr. Stevens indicated, there, we are willing and able to reduce the lighting, the pole heights, which I know is not the, the genesis of your question. But we do have a photometric plan that was included with the detailed site plan that shows adequate foot candles at all locations. There are no dark spots, um, there was a request to add lighting into the courtyard, uh, in the back of the building, which we've agreed to provide, so we believe that lighting is, is more than adequate based upon, um, what's proposed. I will say the detailed site plan, uh, on the county level was referred to the Prince George's County Police Department, but also, I don't know if Mr. Stevens has an opportunity to submit it to the city police, understanding that we're within the municipal boundaries of Bowie. Uh, but we, we do believe that the site and the lighting are consistent with, uh, crime through environmental site design practices, um, so we think that that is sufficient. With respect to traffic, we have Mr. Lenhart on the line, I will let him speak to that as it relates to, um, traffic adequacy and how all intersections are operating. Um, the detailed site plan is, is not in the entitlement process, the application that tests for traffic. However, we are subject to traffic, um, conditions as well as trip caps associated with the primary plan and subdivision. So I'll let Mr. Lenhart, um, speak to that in greater detail as far as the operational, um, aspects of the traffic associated with, uh, with this use and the prior approvals. And then finally, just to tee everything up, um, John, if you could be prepared to discuss, uh, the security measures for the facility at the, at the appropriate time. So I'll turn it over to, to, to Mike Lenhart at this time and then followed up by Mr. Shuden, uh, from Encompass.
Uh, good evening, thank you, Matt, um, for the record, my name is Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. Uh, we did prepare a memorandum, um, evaluating this application, uh, in relation to the underlying approvals. Uh, there's several preliminary plans of subdivision that, um, were, uh, preceding this application. Uh, this one in particular, um, had a trip cap for the development on Pod Six. And, uh, there are six lots on Pod Six, we, uh, in our traffic study, we looked at the development as proposed and approved on each of those lots, including this application. And compared that to the approved trip cap, um, the, uh, current application and, um, approved uses will not exceed the trip cap. Um, in fact, they are, they fall quite below the trip cap. There were several improvements that were required of the Pod Six, um, preliminary plan of subdivision. Uh, those are, um, additional through lanes on Route Three at Maryland four fifty, just south of the Intermodal County Line. Those improvements have been made, um, they, they were made, uh, ten years or so ago roughly. Uh, the, uh, they're also required of the improvement at Route three oh one and, um, uh, Governor Bridge Road, uh, with some widening on both sides of, um, Route three oh one, there, to improve the minor street approaches there, that work was also approved and completed, um, around ten years ago. And, uh, as a detailed site plan, this really does not require a new finding of adequacy. That was done in the prior, uh, entitlement process, uh, we just, uh, prepared an assessment to make sure that it conformed with the prior approvals. I hope that, uh, helps answer your question.
Yeah, and if I could just, if I could just interject real quick, um, so just to kind of summarize that, there are, there were a number of off-site improvements that were required as part of the overall Melford development, which Mike indicated have been, have been constructed. Um, this facility standing alone, based upon the analysis that was done, would, would add thirty-four AM trips and thirty-six PM trips to the peak hour. Which is a fairly nominal number as, as far as it added trips to the network. If we can turn to, uh, John, do you mind jumping in to provide, um, this, the, any information on the security for the facility as far? I'm, I'm sure there's closed-circuit TVs and things like that, but I'll let you address the facility since, uh, you know better than I.
Of course, Matthew, thanks so much for your time. Uh, thank you for your time, everyone, this is John Shuden with Encompass Health Corporation. Uh, as Matt suggested, yes, we have a full complement of security at our hospitals, in addition to the adequate and more than adequate parking lot and site lighting, we also have closed-circuit cameras on the we also have closed-circuit cameras on the outside of the building as well as at every entry door. All of the entry doors during the day are, the main entry door is open to foot traffic. The other doors on the exterior of the building, on the sides, the back of the building, et cetera, are normally locked from the outside and car reader access only controlled and programmed through our corporate office. At a certain period of time in the evening, once visitation hours or visiting hours are over, the entire exterior of the building will shift to a, to a card-access-only entry. So that means the front doors, the sliding doors, will only be card-access entry. Hospital will be staffed twenty-four hours a day at the nurse station, which has views of two of the main doors as well as camera monitors at that nurse station. And again, every exterior door is car reader access in the evening, as well as alarmed, as well as all exterior doors in the patient care areas and the back-of-house areas are either locked regularly from the inside or delayed egress. What delayed egress means is it's a life safety requirement. If you have to exit people out of the building, you have to be able to push a crash bar and hold it for fifteen seconds and then it releases the door and sounds an alarm. So there is no uninhibited access to or from the building other than the front door during the daytime.
Thank you, John.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Trask. Appreciate that. Great questions. Mr. Scoats, do you have any questions, comments, observations?
Yeah, I just want to say, I just want to say, you know, I applaud Encompass because the last twenty years, I spent a great deal of time in visiting assisted living and rehab centers such as Encompass is projecting there. And I just want to applaud you guys for actually having foresight to put a facility like this near an existive, assist assisted living facility. We lose so many people here in Bowie that could take care of being close at home as sent to Anarodil County and other jurisdictions. But the only, the only concern that I had was the proximity of the handicap parking. And in the one slide you showed, Mr. Tedesco, quite impressed. You know, let's face it, the extra, yeah, right there. The, the extra parking slots, for those who have not spent as much time as I have over the last twenty years, have to realize that there's a lot of service care that goes into it, the existing people there and all the physical therapists and medical people. And in a lot of these locations, you actually have an issue with, with parking. So quite pleased with the project.
Thank you.
That is, thanks, Mr. Scoats. Very good comments. Mr. Galado?
Well, a lot of what Ron said was what I was going to say. Unfortunately, in the past three years, I have been in and out of those kind of facilities. One was not good, one was good, and the other was excellent. And I have never heard of this company. Now, the last one I was at was John Hopkins Medical Facility in Baltimore, and they were extremely good. So I'm going to get a little off-point here because Ron covered everything I was going to say. But I have never heard of this company. I am thrilled that they're going to be here. We need it. But I've never heard of them, and I would like to see something delivered to us showing their ratings in the industry, how long they've been in business, how many people they've served, and how effective they have been. Only because I am one who has, like Ron, been in and out of these places. And as much as I'm told to have it, I will look to make sure it is a really good quality place. So I don't know who would answer, but so could anybody who wants to answer me.
Yes. Thank you so much. This is Matt, and again, I'll defer to John. But I just put up another, the slide from our, from the presentation. As we mentioned before, Encompass is the nation's largest inpatient facility owner-operator in the country. As I mentioned, they have over thirty-one thousand employees. And as of year-end twenty-nineteen, did three-point-five billion in revenue and had discharged over a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand inpatient discharges in its facility. So in my opinion, having done some research on them, and I'll let John, you know, speak to his company. But we are very lucky and fortunate to have the nation's premier, largest inpatient facility owner-operator in the country to be joining us in the city, also in Prince George's County. John, did you want to add anything else with respect to the comments?
Just two things. Number one, that the statistics you mentioned, the three-point-five billion in revenue and the hundred-and-eighty-six thousand plus discharge, inpatient discharges, that's on an annual basis. That's not cumulative. And also, we will be glad to put together additional information about the company and send to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Galado. Appreciate that. And we're glad to have you back with us. It's been a while since we've seen you, so welcome back.
Thanks a lot.
Ms. Avery?
I have nothing.
Wow, okay. All right. Well, that's, that's good. Mr. Shuttler?
I just have one question. The nine staff recommendations, is there any issues with any of those?
The recommended conditions?
Yes.
No, that we, we have no issues with them. We, I, we indicated to Mr. Stevens and will indicate again for you all for the record, we're happy to accept those as conditions. I can't speak for Park and Planning, but as far as from the applicant, we're happy to accept them.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So that kind of concludes the report. Ms. Trask, I see your hand up.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is for Mr. Stevens. I was reviewing the report. Was there a stakeholders' meeting on this project?
Yes, there was. We discussed that, I think, on page three of the report. It was held a virtual staff stakeholders' meeting on September twenty-fourth.
Oh, virtual.
There's a summary of that meeting in the report.
Okay, I probably just passed it by. Thank you.
Yeah, there were only two people.
Okay. Thank you. That was it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Good. So with that, I guess we can go into deliberations with the board members. If there's any things that you'd like to say or, you know, speak to the applicant at this time? Okay. Well, I will, you know, I don't want to repeat and, you know, waste everyone's time with repeating the comments that all of my colleagues have already entered into the record. But I do want to say, though, it looks like a quality project. I like Mr. Scoats and Mr. Galado have spent a fair amount of time with relatives in and out of these facilities, and so I know the importance of them and the value that they can bring here to the city of Bowie. It's something that's well-needed. It appears to be modern. I'm sure the techniques that will be used there will be beneficial for all that have to use them. So with that, I would like to say, you know, hopefully, everything goes smooth with the rest of your development. And I, for one, would like to welcome you to the city of Bowie. And with that, I will take a motion from the board.
Mr. Chair, I am moved to make a motion to accept staff's report of approval of the project with missions as written.
We have a motion to accept staff's report, and we have a second. Who made the second?
I did.
Okay. Second by Mr. Galado. All right. With that, are you ready for the question? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it. And we thank you for your, for your vote and your time to the board and to staff Frank, Joe, and Anthony. Want to thank you, guys, for supporting us. You always do a great job. And Joe, if you will, give us a, just kind of give us what the calendar looks like for the next hearing on this subject before the city council.
Okay, for this particular project, they're going to the city council next Monday on the nineteenth of October at eight PM. That's a virtual meeting.
Okay, so that'll be virtual. Great. All right. Well, guys, then with that, congratulations, and we thank you. And I will be there to hopefully relay to the city council the findings of the board on the dates that Joe mentioned.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We greatly appreciate your support, your comments. And Mr. Galado, off the record, we will provide Mr. Stevens with that added information just for your edification so that you have it. But we thank you for your time, and you all have a great evening.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. Enjoy.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of September ninth, twenty-twenty. Everybody's had a chance to review them, and I have a motion for approval. Do I have a second? I need a second.
Second.
All right, we got a second. Okay, so the motion was made to approve the minutes of September ninth, twenty-twenty. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have the same, right? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Minutes have been approved. Joe, do we have anything else on our calendar in the near future?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, there's no definite schedule for anything that we have, but there are a couple of projects that are in the process of coming forward. One is the Mill Branch Crossing Mixed-Use Preliminary Plan of Subdivision. That's the property over on the east side of three oh one, right at Excalibur and Mill Branch Road across from the Walmart. So that's now in for mixed-use development, including residential townhouses and some multifamily units. That'll be coming up, but we don't have a scheduled date yet. Also, the South Lake commercials portion, there's also a plan being prepared for that at this present time. And there may be a related departure from parking standards application, which you would have the authority on. So that would be a companion case. We had to postpone the raised towing, non-conforming use case, and that has not come back yet. We raised some issues that the applicant is trying to uncover some information for us. And as soon as we get that, we will reschedule that hearing. And then the Easy Storage Building up at Gallant Fox Lane has a detailed site plan for a rather substantial addition. And that's also been submitted to Park and Planning. We don't have a definite schedule yet. And there is also a possibility with that case that there would be a departure from parking standards with it. So there's quite a bit of stuff out there, large projects that we would spend a lot of time reviewing with you, but we don't have dates for those. Certainly, some of them might come in before the end of the year. And as soon as we know the schedule on those, we will let you all know. The other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Chairman, is about the Bowie and Vicinity Master Plan. I'm sure you're all aware that Park and Planning is moving ahead with that. They're having community chat meetings right now, which are virtual meetings. And you're encouraged to register and attend those. You can provide your comments as individuals, not representing the board. But Park and Planning is interested in hearing from anybody who's got an opinion about these various topics. And also, in the month of November, they're expected to come out with their playbook of strategies to deal with the existing conditions, challenges that they've, that they've identified. So that's another virtual meeting that would occur mid-November. So I'd encourage you to check our website as well as the Park and Planning website if you want more information. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Joe, thanks for that useful information. Do you have any idea, if you were reading the tea leaves, when the zoning rewrite will be actually implemented?
I do not know, but I've asked the same question of the county staff. They've said that they want to complete the countywide map amendment, which was on hold for a while, and now it's coming forward for public hearings. And I guess you could assume that it would be sometime next year that the, both the countywide map amendment, which sets the zoning for the new rewrite, and then also the, the effective date of the rewrite would be, you know, the same date. So we'll probably know more about that as we get through the countywide map amendment and the work sessions that follow that.
Okay, well, it sounds great. Okay, so with that, everybody, again, once again, thank you for your time. Hope everyone is staying safe and sane. We've got a lot going on with the COVID, this election coming up. So just stay safe, everybody, and we'll see you on the next, next meeting. Good night.
Night.
All right. Good night, everyone.